Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, kindness, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussions and allow us to grow closer as a group. Give us the patience and understanding to make decisions with grace. We also ask that during this next month of change, that we all work together to keep lasting friendships and reach out to welcome the new group of supervisors. We ask you, this is your time.
Next item, please.
Next item is real call. Bieber? Bazin?
Here.
Bonham?
Here.
Bryan?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Curry? Colin?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Davidson?
Levy?
Here.
Moeney?
Here.
Here. Penney?
Here.
Reskin?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Sutherland?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Towns?
Here.
Whitlidge?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Winter?
Here.
Woodman?
Here.
Zajak?
Here.
Zorro?
Here.
Bosworth?
Here.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven present, two absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, item four, Consent Agenda. For A, Adoption of Agenda. For B, Approval of Minutes from March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. C, Nomination, Appointments, and Confirmations. C one, Appointments to the Ad hoc Passenger Rail Committee. D, Recognition of County Employees or Others. D one, Recognizing Beth Jesse. D two, Recognizing Dave Howard. That is the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to have me removed from the consent agenda? Are there any comments? Seeing none there. Motion for approval for consent agenda. Motion by Bosworth, second by Moeney. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval on consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none consent agenda passes. Next item, please.
Next item is Item five, Public Hearing. We do not have a public hearing this evening. Item six, Citizen Participation, Communications, and Analysis. We have several people signed up to speak this evening. We will call your name and have the next person up. Please come up through the center aisle to the podium. Please state your name and municipality. We give you two minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Paul. Answer is Jill Gant.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Paul. I am from Janesville, Wisconsin. And I am a board member for the Children's Museum of Rock County. When my husband and I had our first baby after we relocated to Janesville, it's our hometown, we heard about this new project called the Children's Museum of Rock County. And I was so excited as a brand-new parent to be able to have a place in my beautiful hometown to take my children. That was sixteen years ago. I hope we don't have to wait another sixteen years. I'll for sure be a grandma by then. Rock County Board of Supervisors, we can play, you can play, an integral role in helping us with this instrumental project by helping us move forward by pledging your support as well. Here are some regional benefits that I know will enhance the lives of children and families in our county. More access to enriching and unique experiential learning for all children as they visit with their families. Reduce travel time to other museums that families might otherwise travel to. Increase field trip opportunities for county school districts, private schools, and homeschool families, as well as daycare centers at a time when these organizations had to cut back on field trips due to busing shortages, travel costs, and even bus driver shortages. Museums in closer proximity reduce busing costs and travel time. Increase summer camp programming opportunities for area youth. Unique visitor and employment opportunities. Increase travel to the area which will enhance dollars spent in our region. The list goes on and on. But I want to show you something really interesting. Yesterday, I received the copy of my Midwest Living magazine in the mail, and I was flipping through it. And I noticed that there was an article about Eau Claire and Chip with faults. And there's a list of the top ten things to do there. Guess what was listed? The Children's Museum of Eau Claire. That could be us in two years. Children's Museum of Rock County. And we could be advertised to people all around our nation. I hope that you will help us make it happen. Thank you.
Jill Gant. Remember to come up through the center. And on deck is Claire Gray.
Jill Gant. Municipality is Janesville. I've been a Rock County resident for fifty years. I just did the math. A little scary. I'm here on behalf of the Diversity Action Team of Rock County. I'm going to begin with our mission statement. We work to eliminate racism of all forms and discrimination in Rock County. We promote diversity, equity, and inclusion, also accessibility. I think you can guess why I'm here. DAT members have been actively involved in this work for over twenty-five years. We have bylaws. We have officers. I'm going to tell you who our officers are because I think many of you will know who they are. Mark Perry, Director of Community Action, Rock and Walworth County, is our president. Our vice president is Billy Bob Grant, Janesville. Our treasurer is Vicki Brown, Beloit. And our secretary is Tess Nguyen, Janesville, I believe. We support our county administrator, Josh Smith, who opposes the proclamation as quoted in today's Janesville Gazette. Would any of you who are supporters, board members, or just believe in DAT's mission, please stand? And thank you very much.
Next speaker is Claire Gray. On deck is Kathy Myers.
Hello, Rock County Board Supervisors. My name is Claire Gray. I live in Janesville. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Children's Museum of Rock County. I'm a Children's Museum Board Member, and I joined the board in 2019 to help get the project off the ground. I landed here in Rock County just by chance because I needed to step out of the workforce to raise my children. And as I raised them, I realized that we were missing a critical resource. And that was more early education opportunities for our children. We have a fantastic park system, an amazing county library system. But residents leave our community every single day to go down to Rockford or up to Madison, or over to Sun Prairie to find quality enrichment opportunities for their children and their families. We have families also leaving on the weekends. And again, I was a stay-at-home parent. I exited the workforce to provide a strong educational foundation for my children. And this will be an amazing resource for so many families. I know that about eighty-one thousand to a hundred thousand visitors are going to come to this museum every year. And sixty-four percent of those are going to be Rock County residents. This is a county project. When I joined the board, that only is our name, Rock County, but we did a lot about it. We turned all volunteer board, and we have been since we started in 2007. We did county-wide scavenger hunts that engaged all of the county libraries. We distributed our play kits. And we had an insane reception, demonstrating that this project will not only benefit our Rock County communities, but there is a significant need out there. And we worked in collaboration with our libraries and our park system, demonstrating that they support us when we would work in a collaborative atmosphere. So I just want to say thank you again for entertaining this resolution. I hope you're able to support this project. And thank you for your time.
Kathy Myers. On deck is Richard.
Hi, I'm Kathy Myers, and I'm from Janesville. And I'm here as a friend of Diversity Action Team. I am asking tonight that you vote against the resolution on the agenda, Advancing Accountability to Ensure Ethical Conduct and Equal Treatment in Rock County. I think the resolution is poorly written. It conflicts too many things. But that's a technical objection. I don't agree with it in its substance either. I'm a member of the Janesville School Board, and through one thing I've learned on the school board is that bodies like this need systems in place that will make the work that you do and the work that the county does efficient and effective. And if you have something like that in places called Just Cause, that is a system that you have in place for disciplinary action. This resolution, in my opinion, loosens disciplinary measures as set by Just Cause. You have a policy, like I said, Just Cause, and a procedure that works. And replacing it with this resolution, I believe, will be wrong. It would make things arbitrary and lead to chaos and confusion. It also appears to be an effort to loosen standards for the purpose of retribution, in my opinion, and which I think is unethical and an example of poor word management. DEI programs are incredibly valuable. And they foster better work environment. They encourage diverse perspectives, equitable treatment. They lead to better staff retention, better management. And they help improve the service that you have, that you give to your community. So I'm asking you to please vote against that resolution. Thank you.
Richard McGrath. On deck is Sarah Iverson Smith.
Good evening. My name is Rick McGrath. I'm from Beloit. And I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution, Advancing Accountability to Ensure Ethical Conduct and Equal Treatment in Rock County. I'm not really representing anybody, any organization. I attend different things. I'm just, as a parent. It seems, just reading through this, it seemed to me to be just basically long-headed. The beginning seems, reads to me to be very punitive and as kind of providing cover for the point of the resolution, that being to eliminate DEA. The beginning sounded to me very punitive and trying to make the case that we're taking this very seriously. But in fact, the point of this is promote the DEA. Not training. It seems to me that if the objective is to eliminate, reduce racism or discrimination, or these sorts of proposed objectives, I would think that the DEA training would serve that purpose rather than after the fact, we're going to do all these punitive suspensions and terminations or what have you. It's unclear to me where this is coming from. What is the objective? Why would we want to eliminate the DEA training? For what purpose? Is it because it's not needed? We already know that there is, we already know everything that we need to know. That seems a little less than humble. Or is there some sort of harm that is being caused by providing the DEA training? I find, I would advocate voting against it. Thank you for your time and attention.
Sarah Iverson Smith. On deck is Santos.
On order, Mr. Chair. The speaker has already spoken. They've already written in.
I did. I did write in. So should I not speak?
No, I believe you still speak.
Okay. I wasn't sure, so I did it from all fronts. Is that okay?
I move to appeal the decision of the chair.
Is there a second to that? Seeing none, please proceed.
Okay. So my name is Sarah Iverson Smith. I did write a letter in support earlier today, but I also wanted to make sure I had a chance to talk to you. I moved to Janesville in 2019, so I am a transplant originally from Rock, Dakota. One of the things that I was missing when I came here was a place for the younger kids to go in the wintertime. My kids are now older, but I am very passionate about this project. I joined the museum board in 2022. So I wanted to make something for our next generation of kids in this community. Not only do I think it's important for kids to have someplace to play, I also think it's important for them to have somewhere to learn. And we all know that the studies are out there about how interactive play and touching things is how kids learn. This is a place that they can go all times of year, and it will serve the needs of all the communities within Rock County. This is why we call it the Children's Museum of Rock County. And no child will be left behind in this situation. We will not turn any way by income level. So I think that we have the right team in place. We have a board that has been committed. This project has been around for a very long time, a really, really passionate group of people that have pushed it to the point that we are today. I'm sure you heard in the news that we already have reached private funding of 5.7 million, and we did get a vote from the city of Janesville for another 2 million on Monday. So we urge you to join your neighbors. And if I could just add a few of the comments that the city council said, which I think were really impactful, that I would like you to also hear, is that we can make a name for ourselves in the county when people want to come to visit us. Another one said, "There is nothing for people to do here and kids to do, so we lose important families." They're excited about this project, and they think it'll be catalytic for our community. Three city administrations have supported this project. So I'm asking you tonight to support giving the ARPA funding to the Children's Museum of Rock County. And I think great time.
Next is Jennifer Hornup. Sorry, what's your name? On deck is Jeanne Hornup.
My name is Santo Carfora. I'm on the same page.
On order, Mr. Chair. The speaker has already spoken. We're bending our rules here by having double comment. We have to treat everybody equally. You can't write in and make your comments and then come up and talk again. That's basically double the time. It should be applied to everybody equally.
There's no rule at all on electronic comments. Electronic comments were derived during the COVID era. It helped people who couldn't come to the board comment. They've been carried forward. There's absolutely no rule prohibiting people from speaking twice and submitting an electronic comment. And appearing, there's no rule saying that it's what is supposed to happen. It's really up to the board about what they want to have for their public comment.
Thank you. Chair, now, please proceed.
I move to uphold the decision of the chair.
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Just like.
I move to uphold the decision of the chair.
Is there a second? Seeing none, please proceed.
Just for the record, I did speak with Josh, his secretary, today. And I asked the procedure, and she said I could come up and speak today, even though I submitted my comments. So I'm guessing that you have read one of the comments. I am speaking against a resolution which states, "Advancing Accountability to Ensure Ethical Conduct and Equal Treatment in Rock County." That is an absolutely amazing resolution. It looks so good on paper. I'm feeling the read, the different parts of the resolution. It makes me really wonder, like, what's the hidden agenda here? I came to Rock County fifty-three years ago as an educator, and I spent thirty-four years teaching at Craig High School. One of the first thing I came up against was people thought because of my name, Santo Carfora, they wanted to know where I was really from. I told them I was from Brooklyn, New York. I was born in Brooklyn, raised in Long Island. And they said, "Well, the accent like yours must be, are you sure you're from Brooklyn? Were the name like yours from Puerto Rico or Mexican?" And I was confronted with a feeling of marginalization and discomfort in my own skin. Ended up going to the university, got a master's degree in multicultural education. And two years later, started teaching African-American history at Craig High School. And taught that course at Craig High School for nearly twenty years. My students have been absolute wonderful witnesses to the value of education. "The truth shall set you free." You don't deny people education when they're in a process of learning and grasping. I was just playing pickleball with a former student of mine today, and I said, "When did you get out of that class?" She goes, "I learned that there are other people in the world that don't look like me, sound like me, appear like me, and that they have a place in our world as well." This resolution is denying access to people in Rock County, especially members who worked in Rock County, from getting that kind of training, from learning about people who come from different races, ethnic groups, religious groups, sexual orientation, et cetera, et cetera. And as the county, we should be proud to teach those kinds of classes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeanne Carfora.
On order, Mr. Chair, same reasons before.
Is there a second? Seeing none, please proceed.
Hi. My name is Jeanne Carfora. I've lived in Janesville for forty-four, fifty-four years. I've appreciated this community. We have worked hard with the Diversity Action Team, my husband Santo, and many members of our organization. I'm not used to speaking like Santo is, so please hang in there with me. I understand that your mission as members of Rock County Board is a commitment to ensuring a fair and just environment for all residents and employees. But where does free from ideological bias get in picture? I question the use of the words ideological basis. Who determines that? If we decide that for Rock County staff, then who comes next? If this appears to be a needed resolution, please ask your friends of color. To minimize these Rock County residents is to provide more limitations on their true history. More opportunities for racial discussions are needed. They should not be eliminated. When you can finally serve all people with understanding and respect, then Rock County has reached its mission of serving its residents. I'm going to challenge you to an action. The Diversity Action Team is cosponsoring a documentary film, Who We Are? And it's a chronicle on racism. I think you'll be touched by it. Check out our Facebook page for that information. Just have to say that education and relationships are key to all steps forward.
Thank you.
Something to learn and not limit.
Next speaker is Candy Schurnick. On deck is.
On order, Mr. Chair, same reasons before.
Is there a second? Seeing none, we will proceed.
Is Candy here? Vicki Brown? On deck is Heidi.
My name is Vicki Brown, and I reside in Supervisory District Number fourteen. I started working for Rock County in 1992. Served as county treasurer and served for a time on this board. I also assisted in starting the annual Stand Against Racism here on Courthouse Hill in 2016. I am here tonight to ask you to vote against the resolution put forward by my supervisor, Agenda Item 11G, Concerning DEI Training. If any person on this board, in this room, or watching this YouTube stream denies or does not acknowledge that whites have historically benefited in this country due to the color of their skin, as opposed to people of color, you need a serious come-to-Jesus moment this holy week. In my lifetime, federal legislation was needed to prohibit segregation in public places, prohibit discrimination in employment, in voting, in housing, even in marriage. Passing this resolution is saying ignorance is bliss. Learn. Don't disengage. Learn the racist laws and practices not only throughout our country's history, but even before we were a country. Today, it's easy for folks who look like me to think race is irrelevant. Ask a person of color whether we categorize them as black, brown, yellow, red, or mixed. I'm asking you to be less ignorant and arrogant about our country's shared racial history so we can move forward together. Vote no on my supervisor's resolution.
Next speaker is Heidi Deniger. And on deck is Amy Wee.
Hello, everybody. My name is Heidi Deniger, and I live in Evansville, Wisconsin. I've lived here since 2001, so twenty-three years. Grew up in Honolulu, one of the most multicultural states in the United States. I just want to share some thoughts with you all. One of the reasons you should not vote in favor of this accountability resolution against DEI is I'm a good reason. If you look around the room, there's not too many people that look like me in this room. And I think what the DEI initiatives do is they help me understand the Midwest culture, and it helps the Midwest culture understand my culture and the people we serve in our community. I think that's so important for learning and growing, innovating, and moving forward. There's a company called McKinsey &amp; Company. It's an American multinational strategy and management consulting firm that offers professional services to corporations, governments, and other organizations. It was founded in 1926, and it's the oldest and largest of the big three management consulting firms. And they say that most companies say DEI is a top and growing priority and critical to their success. Most companies have increased or maintained their financial and staffing investments in DEI over the past year. And nearly three out of four say DEI is critical to their success in the future. It is the number-one reason that the company surveys say it is most important for the future of their success as an organization. Seventy-three percent of the company's survey say it is part of the success for their future. The majority of companies have deepened their investments in DEI over the past years. Sixty-six, sixty percent increased investment, thirty-four maintained investment, and four percent decreased investment. Let's not be one of the four percent as we try to move forward with all the initiatives that are taking place here in our county and with Forward Janesville. Forward Janesville also has DEI initiatives. They also have Hispanic, Latino, immigrant initiatives going on right now because of the change in our community in Rock County. And lastly, as you think about us, I will end there. Thank you.
Amy Wee.
Good evening. In 2020, I had the great privilege of meeting and working with Dr. James Lowen as we prepared for the Sixth Annual YWCA Rock County Racial Justice Conference. Dr. Lowen, who was white, began his career teaching at a historically black Tugalu College in Tugalu, Mississippi, near Jackson. He taught at Tugalu College from 1968 to 1975. He then went on to teach race relations for twenty years at the University of Vermont. Dr. James Williams Lowen was an American sociologist, historian, and author. He was best known for his 1995 book entitled, Lies My Teacher Told Me: Everything Your American History Textbook Got Wrong. My favorite quote by Dr. Lowen is this, "Telling the truth about the past..." "Telling the truth about the past allows us to create justice in the present. Achieving justice in the present helps us tell the truth about the past." I recommend we follow Dr. Lowen's sage advice and tell the truth about white privilege and systemic racism, which unfortunately is alive and well. We should tell the truth about microaggressions, microassaults, and micro insults that have macro impact. We should definitely tell the truth about unconscious and conscious bias. In general, we should just tell the truth. In my remaining time, I'm excited to extend an invitation to all community members who value justice and are interested in eliminating racism to join YWCA Rock County at one or each of our three Stand Against Racism events this spring, each occurring from noon to one P.M. On Thursday, April twenty-fifth, we will be right outside this building at the Lower Courthouse Amphitheater. The following day, Friday, April twenty-sixth, we'll be in Beloit at the Harris Seymour Pavilion. And I'm excited to announce we've expanded and will continue our tour in Milton on Thursday, May second, at North Goodrich Park. Thank you.
That is the last of the speakers signed up to speak this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that did not sign up?
Any comments? Comment by email. Supervisors have comments. Right now, please. Supervisor Clayson.
I just wanted to take a moment to invite you, invite everybody to the Second Annual Rock to De Rock. It's an opportunity for community members and along these campuses, if you're going on, I think it's especially interesting for our county board members to be able to come back and see us. It's people that come courses.
Supervisor Lowen.
Thank you, Chair. I'm asking that everybody include their prayers. Send lots of machines. Mary, you've hosted this twenty years.
Thank you, Supervisor Brian.
Tomorrow's Vietnam Veteran Day, so everybody, if you see a vet, think of that.
Thank you. Any other supervisor with comments or announcements? Seeing none? Staff, any announcement from staff? Seeing none? Moving to the next item.
Next item, nominations, appointments, and confirmations. We have already taken referrals. Item eight, recognition of county employees or others who have taken referrals also. Item nine, introduction of new resolutions or ordinances by supervisor for referral to appropriate community.
So any supervisor that has any new resolution or ordinance made by the president at this time, please bring him forward. Seeing none? Next item.
Item ten, reports. Item eight, Rock County Housing Authority, Housing Crisis, Supervisor Wilson.
In the way of introduction, let me just say I'm here speaking on behalf of the Rock County Housing Authority. I serve on the Housing Authority as a Rock County representative. You may not really understand how the Housing Authority is put together. Jamesville has its own Housing Authority. Beloit has its own Housing Authority. And the Rock County Housing Authority essentially serves the rest of Rock County. We're in a somewhat unusual situation at this point in that the Housing Authority is going to be working and is currently working with some ARPA funds that have been set aside countywide for housing purposes. And we'll wait just a second here for some information. One of the real benefits of being on the county board that I've discovered is the opportunity to learn new things. When I went on the Housing Authority, I didn't know very much about housing and proceeded to start to educate myself. When I did that, I discovered some things that were pretty disturbing. I want to share some of that with you this evening. I'm sure, let's see if we can get... Okay, working now. Characterize this as a crisis, a housing crisis. I'm sure this isn't the first time that you've heard housing crisis. But sometimes it's not quite obvious to us. You've got a decent group over your head, and that crisis isn't yours, it belongs to somebody else. In fact, I want to tell you tonight that this crisis affects all of us. You may associate the phrase "housing crisis" with the COVID-nineteen pandemic, but the crisis actually started long before. Really, we have to go back, back about twenty years to look at the origins of that housing crisis. The bars in front of you there show the housing market over a period of time. And during the early years of the two thousands, there really was a housing boom. Many houses were built. You can see where things dipped there, and it's two thousand seven, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Think back, the recession happened late in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. The housing market just kind of disappeared. In addition, in two thousand eight, we had kind of a double whammy. The GM plant closed in two thousand and eight. And so what we're faced with is this gap where housing suddenly stopped and came to a screeching halt. Between two thousand and six and two thousand and nineteen, the number of households in Rock County increased by almost three thousand. In that time, only about two thousand housing units were built. So what we're talking about is a gap of about a thousand, a deficit of a thousand units in that period of time. There's been some slight progress made in recent years. The housing market has been improving somewhat. But since two thousand and nineteen, we've really only gained about a hundred units on that deficit that we've had. We've continued to have new households move into the county, and we're not really keeping up with demand or barely keeping up with demand. There are two major focuses or factors that I want to stress. First one is availability. Second one is affordability. As we've already seen on the supply side, the supply hasn't been keeping up with demand. Simple economics tell us that when scarcity exists, prices are also going to rise. And so the availability and affordability go together. The supply side is easy to understand, but what about affordability? What does affordable mean anyhow? U.S. Housing and Urban Development uses a scale that looks at the percentage of total household income devoted to housing to assess affordability. In general terms, a household is considered to be cost burdened if it spends thirty percent of its gross income or more on housing. Housing costs aren't just rent or mortgage payments. Housing costs also include related costs like utilities. And I might add taxes as well. Taxes are part of the affordability picture. There's something that HUD calls severely cost burdened. HUD categorizes households that have to spend fifty percent or more of their income on housing as being severely cost burdened. I can imagine that if you apply that mathematical formula to your own circumstance and think about spending fifty percent of your gross income on housing alone, you can start to understand what that might feel like, what that might look like. If you're at a lower income level, that obviously accentuates it even more. That thirty percent rule that I mentioned, thirty percent being cost burdened, doesn't just apply to the rental market. It applies to homeowners as well. In Wisconsin, about twenty-two percent of Wisconsin homeowners are cost burdened. So twenty-two percent of our homeowners spending more than thirty percent on housing. Forty-three percent of the rental households in the state are cost burdened. U.S. Census Bureau reported in two thousand twenty-two, there were approximately seventy-one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven housing units in Rock County. About twenty-two thousand of those were rentals. So you can kind of see that relationship between owner-occupied units and rental units in Rock County. But it's not the same throughout the county. Here are some figures that break down Beloit, Jamesville, and what we're showing in the Rock County here. Understand what that Rock County is, is everything that's not Jamesville and Beloit. More rentals in Beloit, more rentals in Jamesville than the county as a whole. And the difference is pretty significant. About a ten percent gap between Silicon Beloit and the balance of Rock County. The crisis isn't just a rental crisis. The crisis actually impacts all levels and affects every area of the county. It affects homeownership. It affects the rental market, but it also affects workforce recruitment. And there are social service costs that go along with the housing crisis that we have. Let's talk about homeownership for just a minute. In two thousand and ten, the median sale price of a home in Rock County was around a hundred thousand dollars. By two thousand and twenty, the median sale was close to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. In two thousand and twenty-two, that number peaked close to two hundred and fifty thousand, started to drop in large part due to higher interest rates. But I just saw a report yesterday that indicates that, once again, home prices are increasing. And so we're back in that two hundred and fifty thousand range. During that same period, median incomes did go up. However, they went up from forty-seven thousand one twenty-eight to seventy thousand six thirty. When I'm talking about household incomes, I'm always talking about a household of four. HUD uses different numbers, so a household of one or a household of two has a different number. But just for sake of having something consistent, we're dealing with households of four today. Here's that chart that shows the increase in household income and the increase in prices of homes. You can see how that gap is getting wider all the time. The outcome of that is that in two thousand and twenty-four, the traditional middle-class aspiration of owning one's own home is increasingly becoming an unattainable dream for families in Rock County. In two thousand seventy-one, or a little over seventy-one percent of the housing stock in Rock County was owner-occupied. That percentage is now about sixty-eight percent. One of the things that's happening is people can't own their own homes is that places more pressure on the rental market as people who can't buy are renting instead. And so we see more and more pressure kind of getting pushed down on that rental market. What about the rental market? We already provided these numbers, about seventy-one thousand housing units, about fifty thousand owner-occupied units, about twenty-one thousand rental units. Recent statistics say that forty-two percent, and this is Rock County numbers now, not Wisconsin, forty-two percent of Rock County renter households, that's over nine thousand households, fall into the cost burden category. Twenty-one percent of those rental households, that's forty-five hundred households, fall into that severely cost burdened category. Who's most severely impacted by the housing crisis? Well, the more acute the housing crisis becomes as the income gets lower. But what does low income mean? Fortunately, there are some definitions for that as well. I think you're going to be surprised by who falls into the severely low income category, but we'll wait for a few definitions before we get there. Because housing costs differ from place to place, and Rock County is not California or Boston, HUD adjusts the median incomes. So we're going to be talking about numbers that are Wisconsin numbers, not things from the coast. HUD uses three different, three different levels. And let's see here. There we go. Three separate household income categories are tracked. There's low income, very low income, and extremely low income. So three that fall into that category, what does that mean? Well, here's a chart to help us out. The median income, and this is an updated figure, two thousand twenty-three figure that Andrew and James from Planning Development shared with us, eighty-nine thousand two hundred is now the median income for a family, a household of four in Wisconsin. If you're between fifty percent of the median and eighty percent of the median, you fall into the low income category. So roughly forty-five thousand to seventy-one thousand, you're low income. If you fall in between twenty-six thousand seven and that forty-four six, you're considered to be very low income. If your household income, and remember, we're talking household of four again, is below twenty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty, you're considered to be severely low income. Well, what's the impact, and who does it impact the most? There we go. There was a report published in two thousand twenty-three, used mostly census data from two thousand twenty and the American Index that updates that, and HUD statistics as well. It documented a really similar number to what we were talking about, the very cost burden, about forty-five hundred households that were extremely low income. For every hundred households that fell into that extremely low income category, the report says there were only fifty-four affordable units. Where are these people? Where are these people living? You know, we hear about people doubling up. We hear about recidivism of, you know, college-age and later kids. We'll be back in with mom and dad. We hear about sofa surfing. We hear about homeless. One hundred households looking, only fifty-four affordable units. But the situation actually gets worse than that because some of those units that are affordable aren't available. They're already being occupied by someone else. Think about it and put it into your own perspective. If you had a choice of renting a place that was a decent place that only cost you twenty percent of your income, or another place that cost thirty percent of your income, you'd choose the place that was twenty percent. And so again, we get this downward pressure. The lower the household income, the fewer affordable and available choices. I said we were going to be, you were going to be surprised when we get to talking about who the extremely low income people are. Extremely low income people include at least one senior citizen. Thirty percent fall into that category. So of the extremely low income, thirty percent of those households include one senior. These statistics don't double count, so you clear one before you start the other. The second one is eighteen percent of the households include at least one person who has disability. You add those together, those are separate households, and you're almost at half of the households falling into the category of either... falling into the category of either being seniors or people with disabilities. Thirty-five percent of that extremely low-income households has someone who's actively in the workforce, the so-called working poor. They're out there, they're working, they get a paycheck. It's just not enough to not have to pay thirty percent for, for their housing. And here's a pie chart just to show you that breakdown. Thirty percent seniors, eighteen percent disabled, thirty-five percent working, and then another category that's about seventeen percent. And in summary, and I'm sure that you're happy to hear those words, in summary at this point, in summary, a Rock County household with an income of about seventy-one thousand, that eighty percent of median income, can probably find a place to rent. There are, according to that gap study, ninety-eight units that fall into that category for every hundred households that are looking. A Rock County household with a gross income of about forty-five thousand, so that fifty percent of median income, is going to have a much harder time finding a rental unit. There are only sixty-six units available for every hundred households looking. Then finally, a Rock County household that falls into that low category, twenty-seven thousand or below, faces an almost impossible task. Twenty-three units available for every one hundred households that are looking. And here's just a chart to kind of show you how, as income goes down, the gap becomes wider and wider. Just a couple of final pieces here. You hear the term workforce housing. And as I went by, I mentioned that workforce is impacted by the housing crisis. Workforce housing is defined as being somewhere between sixty percent and a hundred and twenty percent of median income. So it's higher than these low-income categories that we were talking about. For a four-person household in Rock County, that's about fifty-three, five, up to about a hundred and seven thousand. So these are people who are, you know, fully employed, have a pretty good job when you get nearer the top there. But in Wisconsin, we've got an issue with workforce housing. We've been pretty successful in some areas, attracting businesses. But increasingly, those businesses are asking, where is my workforce? How am I going to have workforce members who are able to live somewhere near their, where they work so they don't have to start factoring that commute time and commute dollars into the calculation for wages? A four-person household with an income of eighty percent of median is probably needing to find a place that they can rent and spend less than seventeen fifty. If they're sixty percent, it's about thirteen hundred. Rental costs in Rock County are now over that one thousand range in terms of medians. So, you know, we're in that range, but we've got a dearth of workforce housing. The lack of affordable housing in Rock County impacts also the needs for social services. And those social services costs are really hard to tally up. You know, we're not in the housing business in a big way in the county government. Housing's not one of our big focuses. That belongs primarily to municipalities. But we see the impacts in our budget of what happens with the housing crisis. Our, we could do a whole presentation, I'm sure, on either workforce housing or on those social service costs. Let me just add, mention a couple before we leave here. The crisis results in the need for homeless shelters, transitional housing, housing vouchers to place temporarily homeless individuals in, in hotels. It exacerbates health and mental health challenges. It's costly in a lot of ways. And we need to start thinking of these things that the county does have some authority over in terms of what can we do to support improvements in that housing market? Unfortunately, there are a whole lot more questions than there are answers at this point. As I said, Wisconsin counties don't have the primary responsibility for housing. Municipalities have considerably more connection. Decisions are made routinely in cities that affect things like housing density, setbacks, zoning requirements, whether or not mother-in-law apartments are allowable on a lot. So there are a lot of things that can be done through local ordinances and zoning laws that can happen at the local level. From the county perspective, we do have, in the Housing Authority, control over a program called Home. And I'd invite any of you to ask me, Kathy Schultz is the other county supervisor who serves on the Housing Authority. Ask Andrew Baker or, or James Otterstein in Planning and Development. They can share some information about that. In addition, you may recall that in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, four point five million dollars worth of ARPA funds were set aside for the purposes of workforce and affordable housing. Currently, we're working very actively with developers in multiple communities. We're not just talking Janesville and Beloit, although Janesville and Beloit are involved. But reviewing what's come in so far, we have proposals from Edgerton. We have proposals from Milton. This is a county-wide project, problem. And that four point five million dollars is intended to be spent on a county-wide basis. In summary, I just want to say that current schedule to bring recommendations on that housing money is targeted for May. So in May, we'll be bringing to the newly-elected board information about projects that are recommended for ARPA funding from that four point five million. And finally, just want to suggest that the housing crisis in Rock County is both real and that affects all of us. Take a question or two if there are any, but I know we've got a long meeting agenda here. May not be a lot of questions on the floor, but please do feel free to ask. We've been kind of digging into these numbers in a big way to try to understand what the challenge is and to address it in the best way that we can. The Housing Authority in meeting has decided that our highest priority is to generate as many affordable and workhouse units as is possible with that four point five million dollars. Thank you.
Any questions? Just a question, ready?
Thank you. Could you post this on a webpage on your?
Sure, I'd be glad to if Randy's nodding a cent here.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cullen?
I stole my mic. Sorry.
Anyone else? Supervisor, here.
I thirded. I thirded, that was going to be my response as well. Excellent job. The numbers and the relationships are very clean. I think it'd be very valuable for all to have that assessment.
Last Tuesday night, I did this presentation for the Milton City Council. We dropped in some slides specifically about Milton. The people, the researchers that were involved in the gap report that I mentioned have been very, very helpful. We contacted them, they provided us with a date, or with a, a Rock County set of data. It doesn't get to the township level, but it does get down to the village level. So it includes Clinton and it includes Footville as well as the larger municipalities. And gives us a real and kind of frightening picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Excited.
Next item, item eleven, new business, eleven A supplementary appropriations and budget changes. Eleven A one, authorizing ARPA funds for children's museum of Rock County and a venue to twenty twenty-four budget.
Their motion, motion by Winters, second by Bonkap. Supervisor Cullen?
I'd just like to say on this, we have John Westphal here, who presented to the whole board a month or so ago and could answer any questions if he asked specific questions. My comment is, this is good for the city of Janesville, it's good for Rock County. There's ARPA funds out there that we would not be able to discuss. This discussion, if the ARPA funds weren't available, there's a strong possibility that we would probably not put them all there to be used by the date that they expire. And this would be a great opportunity to do that. I'll finish with a simple comment. I have two grandchildren, two hundred and forty-two miles away in Rochester, Minnesota. And I've been inside their children's museum six times. And I'd like the shorter drive to go with children's museum.
Supervisor Bonkap?
I also agree that'd be a great way to spend our money. This is equivalent to the money that we gave to Lloyd Library for the children's portion. It benefits the city of Janesville and Rock County. Our staff here in Madison, I'm just home, so it's nice having, having something here for the kids to further their education, get them on a better start, having something available so we can go. I think it'll be used extensively. Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, yes, I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to follow up Supervisor Cullen's comment as a grandfather by saying, as a grandfather, when grandkids have come and visited, we've gone to the children's museum in Milwaukee, we've gone to the children's museum in Rockford, we've gone to the children's museum in Madison. And again, it would be nice to take them to the children's museum in Janesville. Thank you.
Supervisor Schultz?
Yes, I have questions for John Westphal. Let me start by saying I am very supportive of this concept. What is, is of concern to me is how are you going to ensure all children, especially on a lower rung, that will not be turned away? And if one of the things that you do is you have a cover charge for the adult bringing them in, and the parent is not able to pay, how are you going to make that work so the children get in? They have to be in with their parents.
The, the number one revenue source that we have as a children's museum is the tenants' turnstile clicks, admission to come in. No child, no family will be turned away out of the economic situation or their inability to pay. So it will be, I mean, there is no children's museum yet, so we don't really have operating agreement bylaws. But that's where our board is going to set up. So if the parent has to accompany the child and they can't afford it, they're going to come in. There's no child that is going, or family will be turned away. And when, if we have to figure out a way to fund that, we're going to.
I'd like to know how you're going to set that up though, so it isn't something that's going to make people uncomfortable?
So I'm an electrical contractor. I've never run a children's museum. I don't know exactly the, how we do that, how we verify that. But what we are going to do, Supervisor, is hire the top-notch professional executive director that we can possibly afford. And we are told we will be able to attract people from all over the country who are very skilled. They will know the specific rules, regulations, the testing procedures we would do on someone's economic capability. And I'm sure there's other nonprofit organizations around the county that we could learn from them of how they, their testing or how they do that. But I'm just telling you, that's what we're going to do. There's, nobody's going to be turned away. Specifically how, I can't tell you.
I think some of your cohorts might be able to.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go up there, go ahead.
Okay, well, you can tell they're smarter than I am.
Well, I'm trying to be a mom, and this is like a very important part of it because, so. My name's Clara. We intend to be part of the Museum for All initiative, which is very common for children's museums, where income families, it's basically income-based. There's free and reduced admission depending on your income level. That's also been worked into our operating model. John can share the consulting con report that we had done with a specific children's museum consulting firm, where all the numbers were crunched. That's where we got our eighty-one thousand visitors, eighty-one thousand to a hundred thousand visitors overall. Eighty-one thousand in a stable year, up to a hundred, a hundred and twenty for our opening years, so years one to three. So it is factored in. We are going to be a nonprofit, and so we intend to get sponsored days from businesses where everything will be open. Rotary Botanical Gardens does that, they have free days. We also intend to be a really strong partner with the school district. That means school children either coming into the museum or us going out in the field. Field trips don't just have to be to the museum, they can be out. Also, as, as I commented, we've been all volunteer run. We did our free playkit events. Any of you participated in our scavenger hunt, that was all free. That doesn't mean that that has to go away. You know, we did all of that on the backs of volunteers. And so we can easily have a volunteer friends of the children's museum who continues the playkit program. But if you're asking specifically about admission, yes, Museum for All admission, Museum for All initiative, you can look it up. It's also factored into our operating model, and we can get you those numbers.
For me, that is very important because I know that I'm also serving on human services and I know the impact on kids that are struggling and parents are struggling and I don't want them left out.
I was a foster care, I can tell you, I understand.
We're going to hold you.
Oh goodness, well then I guess I'm going to be getting free playkits for the next twenty years. Dang it.
Supervisor Sardel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to recuse myself of calling mayor may or may not be asked to work on a startup building. The museum will be housed. Thank you.
Supervisor Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know, well, back when my grandchildren used to come to Janesville, we had a grandparent pass for down in Rockford. So whenever they came to town, we always stuck them down there. And I know what a nice facility they had. It would be nice to have one here in Janesville that people don't have to travel either to Rockford or Madison. So thank you, and really support the project.
Supervisor Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is, sounds like a great project. And I hope it has completion. And I think it will, obviously, there's a lot of support for it. And it's already, it's already been very strong in support financially. I'm struggling to support putting tax dollars towards this. And I'm not sure that it's the most responsible decision for the county to do that in an environment, an atmosphere where we have excessive need in other areas that is more appropriate for county responsibility, such as what we just heard, the report of our housing issues here in that county. I just think maybe we need to refocus a little bit how we should be spending tax dollars. I'm not sure I can support this project and put the money towards it.
Supervisor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of concerns. I think this is a great idea, I really do. Comparing this to the Boyd Library is not quite correct because Boyd Library is part of the county system. If you have a question, since you want to take the money away from the small business grants, there was a resolution that we voted to table, and that was scratched our last meeting. And I want... And I want to know what happened to that? Because that not only made a couple of changes to try and incentivize people to take the money, but it also helped, and it was going to put a deadline on that. Can you know what happened to that resolution?
I'm not sure where we are with it. So we can better research that.
So I don't have an answer for you, I'm not aware of decisions that were made around the resolution, where it went. It is not on the agenda, that's about all I can say.
That's fine. My biggest concern is there's all of a sudden a rush to try and get our money, which means it's going to have to be refunded, repurposed from someplace else. And I was hoping that more people would, more small businesses would take advantage of the small business grants. So that is my biggest concern. I do think this is a great idea, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Sarder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo the concerns of Supervisor Towns and Supervisor Woodman. I'm also concerned in terms of the ongoing funding and the sustainability, because we know that it is going to need some help elsewhere to, on an ongoing basis. And with the ARCA here, all of our ARCA money's already been allocated. So now we're starting to get into a situation where we're spending our money that's already been allocated to some other projects, and we're rating everybody's ARCA funds. So I do have those same concerns that were expressed by my colleagues. Thank you.
Supervisor Mowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with Supervisor Towns, I have the same concerns. I did donate personally to the museum, because I think that's where it should come from, is the people of the county. So I will be more than that this. Thank you.
Supervisor Quasid.
Thank you, Chair. I support this as an act of development project first, but I also see it from an ARCA perspective as a really valuable use of funding. City has worked for two and a half years now. We've seen so many times, we've heard about gaps in education that has gotten worse because of COVID. And we're seeing it all across the board, and we're concerned about our future. And I've sat here and wondered what can we do as a power to support that? We know that birth re-use, the primary replacement, we can begin to get children in age and get them to start closing that gap. It's too late by the time they get to kindergarten. The concern is we're creating a long-term impact on what was there for the gap. So I think it's a good use of our funding.
Thank you. Supervisor Sarder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Man comment on the business grant fund. What happened there is, we were looking at a $200,000 grant, and we got administration costs that came in that didn't leave very much left. And the administrative cost to implement the rest of that didn't seem likely. It didn't seem worth it. It seemed better to have the ARCA fund transferred elsewhere of what was left. That's all. Thank you.
Supervisor Babbitt.
Yeah, I just wanted to, excuse me. I just wanted to address the idea of the small business grant. This is a small business, it's just an on-site small business. It's going to employ people, it's going to bring people to downtown. I, I figured this was a no-brainer. It's, it's good for everybody. It's good for our children, our educational system. It's, it's good for the economy of Rock County. And I'm firmly on board with this. And I, I just think we, we missed the vote a little bit without not teaming up with the Woodman Center project, but we can't, we can't overlook this project. This is, this is going to be highly beneficial for, for a great community, so I'm on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a roll call. Please vote.
Supervisors Aja and Supervisor Schultz.
Did you, I think, did you have a question?
I did. And so now we'll, that's the time to turn.
What is your question?
Do you?
Yes. Seventeen yes, eight no, three absent, one abstaining. Motion, Bill.
Next item, please.
Next item, item 1182, carryover of 2023 budget items to 2024. There are two amendments. If you're looking at your resolution, it is the fifth number down in the column for computer supplies. It currently says 133,232. It should be 181,232.
Fifth, fourth number down.
Fourth number, thank you. Fourth number down. The eighth number down. Is that right here? Yes. Okay, it says it's 672, 978. It should be 720,000 and 978.
Is there a motion by, or a second, second by Woodman? Supervisor Mowen, anything else to add?
Thank you. This is a carryover, we do this gentleman every year at this time, when we get reconciled budget, and this is a project that haven't been done. If we've ordered trucks, trucks in your budget in 23, but we didn't get them there, it's carried over to 24. It's no money for the end, it's just money from 2023, we need to carry it forward to 2024. Any questions? Chair is here.
Any questions? Supervisor Woodman's. Supervisor Sarder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to bring up some questions here that I got from the constituent of our community just regards to the carryover. So in 2020, we had a carryover amount of about 7.6 million. In 2021, it was about 7 million. In 2022, it was 10.8. 2023, 13.9. It seems like we're starting to kind of get on this trend where we have all these project carryover from year to year. And this constituent does have questions of, why is the dollar figure, kind of seem like it's going up from year to year to year? It almost, they're wondering, is it perhaps like a project planning perspective, where we intended to do all these projects in a single year, we couldn't get them all done, so now they're going to be rolled forward to another year? And is, is there something going on to explain that? Is it a planning issue? Can we get some comments on that, please?
So I believe for like the capital projects, we've had some, a couple of larger capital projects in the past few years, but it's, that's pretty much the one. Part of it that has it rising is backwards. For example, DFW for their equipment, they have 3.3 million carried over because it's, some vehicles are so backordered, it can take a year or two to get them in. So that is, that'd be a problem, you know, raising the carryover amounts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? See, now it is a roll call. Please vote.
Supervisor Vennec. Twenty-six yes, zero no, three absent.
Next item.
Next item is item 11B, contracts, 11B1, awarding bid for correctional healthcare services at the Rock County Jail for 2025 through 2029.
Motion by Bonkap, there's a second. Second by Conus, then Supervisor Conus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rock County requested sealed proposals to help your providers to provide correctional healthcare services for inmates in incarcerated and jailed. This request covered comprehensive correctional healthcare services, including at minimum, physicians, nursing, sick call, medication dispensing, pharmaceuticals, TB testing, x-ray, mental health services, laboratory, off-site medical services, hand-held services, off-site hospitalization, blood draws and medical supplies. These healthcare services will cover all costs associated with Rock County Jail and any healthcare and treatment, subject to the terms and limitations as outlined in the proposal. Proposals will be reviewed by a panel consisting of sheriff's office personnel and purchasing staff with the recommendation and a regular contract for vital core health strategies of Topeka, Kansas. We would appreciate your support of this bid. And Sheriff Fell is here. Anyone has any specific questions?
Are there any questions? Supervisor Sarder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the committee meeting, Sheriff Fell did an excellent job explaining why we're not going with the lowest bidder here. And in the interest of transparency, I, I think it is in fact justifiable for this, but if we could give them a call up, explain the reason why we're not going with the lowest bid.
Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this a little bit. As Supervisor Sarder pointed out, we didn't go with the lowest bidder on this, that group is our current healthcare provider. Crander Lissner was going to go over, and she handed out, there should be a packet handed out to each of you that kind of lays out our reasoning, and she'll go over that in a bit of detail with you. So then if there's any questions beyond that, we'll be able to answer them at that point.
There any questions or comments? See, now this is roll call. Please vote.
Twenty-six yes, zero no, three absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, item 11C, amending chapter three, part seven, sub-part two of the Rock County Code of Ordinances, second reading.
Motion by Zorro, there's a second. Second by Vennec, question, this is the second reading. Of course, I don't think there's anything else to add.
Nope, it's just for deliberation and then voting on whether to adopt.
Thank you. Supervisor Davis.
I have one question, and that's about American Indian or Native American timing ceremonies using backwards. Yes. Could this be a problem?
No, so the, basically counties and all municipalities are very constrained in the way that they regulate tobacco, tobacco products and nicotine products. So obviously there's statewide and countrywide regulation on the use of tobacco. That also, there have been specific carve-outs for tobacco taxes with regard to Indian tribes and the relationships that Indian tribes have with the department revenue, both federal department revenue and state department. And we are only allowed to adopt an ordinance that strictly conforms with state statutes. So all of this ordinance really does is memorialize as a part of our ordinances, the same provisions that already exist in state statute that are already applied in state statute, and allows for our sheriff's office or our public health department, if they so chose, to issue citations based on violation of those ordinances.
So we're insistent with state law?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or comments? See, now this is a roll call. Please vote.
Yes, twenty-two, no four, three absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, item 11C, updating wage grid implementation criteria related to physicians at the Department of Public Works.
Is there a motion? Motion by Bryant, second by Woodman's. Supervisor Mowen.
Supervisor Woodman will do it. Will explain. Supervisor Woodman.
Supervisor Woodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This updating affects all public works employees who were, and on the old grid, were in different places, but when they were placed on the new grid, they replaced the same job, the same, everything was the same, except for the rate paid. What this does is rectify that situation where they're doing the same job, they will all be paid the same upon scene work. And we put a lot of thought into this, and it was, we felt this was a clear step forward. So thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Hoven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Echoing the words of Supervisor Woodman, it was a very diligent piece of work that the highway department did, one was brought to their attention about this correction that need to be involved on behalf of these gentlemen. Our ladies, if you're around. But what was saw, as this problem is not, and has not been an unusual case in our county, it has been a few corrections done at this point in time to repair inconsistencies. So this is not a adjustment in any of our, um, technical, um, duties, if you will, it is not. It's internal within the highway department. So the director of the highway department issued his statement to the town board, I assume, the highway department, and also to the staff committee. And, but I think this is a very good piece of business, and I do support this entirely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Woodman's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up. The money that this is coming from is coming out of the public works department. We had money set aside in case there's a fluctuation in overtime, and so that's where this money's coming from.
Thank you.
Good evening. One thing that we want to bring to the attention, if the board chooses to approve this resolution, it would do so in explicitly the understanding that you're approving it for the highway department and those 12 employees. There are other county employees who are in similar situations, that their jobs have been collapsed into a wage grid, and they are not consistently paid with the same adjustment as a seniority. So if the board approves, we just want to make sure you understand that you're doing that for the 12 employees at the highway department specifically. As you can see from the administrator's note, if we were to use this same agreement with all other county employees who are in similar situations, you are looking at 1.1 million additional dollars. So we just want you to make sure you're aware that this is being done for specifically the 12 employees at the highway department.
Thank you. This is roll call. Please vote.
Supervisor Zaja. Twenty-six yes, zero no, three absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, item 11F, establishing the salary for the Rock County Register of Deeds, County Department Treasurer for the 2025-2028 term.
Woodman's there, and second by Winters. Supervisor Bryant.
Basically, what this is, the Rock County Register of Deeds clerk and treasurer, the multiple, participate in all the benefits available to the department, adds under the same terms and conditions, including health and dental plans that may be modified from time to time, and, so I, I reckon.
And supervisor, I record your.
Supervisor, please.
So this resolution is setting the salary wages for these elected officials for the term. Their county board staff committee recommended a three percent increase across all four years for that. At your station, I did provide information related to elected official increases and wages for the same information that we provided to the staff committee. The first page is just a summary of the elected official salaries for Rock County employees and all of our current elected officials. And the preceding three pages after that is the information related to comparable counties and other counties that at the time we had talked to the county board staff committee, had set their rates. Those, Rock County is in yellow. Any of the areas, counties that are highlighted in gray, those were set at the time we just initially discussed this resolution with county board staff committee. Any of the counties in white are ones that we have recently settled and I was able to get updated information for those counties. So I can answer any questions if anybody has them.
All right, are there any questions? Seeing none. This is roll call. Please vote.
Supervisor Bryan. Twenty-six, yes, zero, no, three, yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item eleven G, advancing accountability to ensure ethical conduct and equal treatment in Rock County.
There are motion, motion by Zorol. There are second, seconded by Penny Coates. Supervisor Zorol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to point out that this resolution's been in works for six months now. And there was an article in the newspaper yesterday and of course, they're talking about the the particular resolution that's six months old. And there's been a lot of work since then and compromise and work with multiple supervisors to kind of come up with something that, you know, everybody could get behind, take out some of the stuff that people don't agree with. So I want to pass it off to Supervisor Wilson here.
Supervisor Woodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to present and the supervisors have in front of you a proposed amendment to item eleven G. And it's a radical departure, so I certainly understand if people would choose to vote on another reading. However, let me read it. It's very short. The title has been changed to ensuring equal opportunity in Rock County hiring practices. And here's what it says. Whereas Rock County is dedicated to uphold your principles of equality, fairness, and legal compliance in its employment practices and workplace environment. And whereas Rock County is committed to emphasizing individual merit and qualifications in employment decisions, but acknowledges that implicit bias can affect decision-making based on a variety of personal affinities and characteristics. Now therefore be it resolved that Rock County shall actively work to identify and mitigate implicit bias in hiring and promotion decisions and shall demonstrate a commitment to applying the principles of individual merit, qualifications, professional competence in its hiring practices. And be it further resolved that it is the policy of Rock County to foster an merit-based, unbiased decision-making culture in hiring and promoting staff. This short resolution substitute is the result of a lot of conversation over an extended period of time. I was totally against the initial resolution that was presented. And the county board staff committee, when it was presented to county board staff, entertained the idea of trying to work with the supervisor who introduced the initial resolution to look at it and try to build bridges rather than to blow things up. That is what this is attempting to do. It's attempting to recognize that implicit bias exists and enters into decision-making on occasion. It supports the idea of educating people about those implicit biases that may affect hiring decisions. At the same time, there are no racial tests on abilities. And we believe that the idea of hiring more qualified is not a biased step. Looking at whether or not there are implicit biases is important. Thank you.
Supervisor Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, but before we go on, there was an amendment made, but no second, so.
Second.
Seconded by Stevens.
So my first question is, so is this now the new resolution in its entirety?
Yes, so my, my understanding from Supervisor Wilson is that he's offering what has been handed out and what he has read now to the record as a substitute amendment to the entire resolution. I would, I would note as well for my, just by, I guess, my preference too would also be that if that is the board's will, that you also strike the notes off the resolution because those notes would be no longer relevant to the resolution.
Okay, so then my other question is, I'm kind of feeling like this, does this mean to burn out? This is a social issue which would have been supposed to be taken up?
No, because it really is setting forth the policy of the county. So it's a direct articulation of the county's own policy. So we, you know, we have a section of our rules now that prevents the recognition of groups or the honoring of weeks or days or even hours on behalf of individuals that aren't county employees or county supervisors or inductees to the Hall of Honor. But inherently, the primary power of the board is to set the policy of the county itself and to direct staff to conform its administration of county government in compliance with that policy. And that's what this resolution, resolution does.
Okay. So then my follow-up question is, has, another follow-up question is, was Josh Smith involved in the drafting of this resolution? And has there been a discussion about how this resolution fits into some of our, into the just cause? Let's talk about the just cause. So has there been a conversation about how this resolution works with just cause? Do we even need this?
So you would have to ask Supervisor Wilson about the conversations that he had with other individuals with regard to drafting the proposed amendment. I can tell you I wasn't involved with it. In terms of the way that it affects just cause, so the primary note, the primary aspect of my note that dealt with just cause was the notion of introducing this probable cause standard. So Supervisor Zorol's original resolution articulated that we were going to suspend without pay members of management who had been found to have met a probable cause standard for engaging in discrimination. And that type of employment action would not be in conformance with our current set of ordinances and policies. By striking all of the language that is about taking those employment actions and only setting forth a policy perspective about what the benefits of a policy for the county are, the just cause concerns are no longer present in the event.
Okay, so if it's okay to ask Supervisor Wilson, was Josh Smith involved in a conversation related to the new, to the amendments that you made to this resolution?
Supervisor Wilson.
No, he was not. He was not a big part of the discussion.
Then I would move to table this until we have an opportunity to talk to Josh Smith about this since he was very much involved in this.
So just because it's really important when we do these motions to postpone that we specifically understand the confines. You can postpone to a date certain, which automatically brings it back to the board on whatever date you choose. Or you can postpone indefinitely, which basically kills it. It can be brought back. There's nothing that prohibits the resolution from being brought back, but there would be no identified date upon which it would be brought back to the board. You can't really, and what, at least historically, the chair has ruled, you can't just postpone on it on the accomplishment of a condition. Because it's just who judges then is met. So you can do it to a date certain or you can do it indefinitely and.
Okay, I motion to postpone for what, maybe two, two meetings, so we have an opportunity to talk to Josh Smith.
Second. Motion by Stevens, seconded by Davis. Any discussion? Supervisor Zorol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would recommend voting against that. First of all, this, this is something that the current board has been working on for the last six months. It should be considered by the current board. If you were to postpone it for two meetings, that would not happen because you'd have a new board at that point. Secondly, it is, if you were to have his notes on here, his notes are just going to say matter of policy. So I move to strike the notes.
I don't think that's in order. There's an order of precedence for motions. I think when we have a motion to postpone, you can't move to amend the resolution. Well, the motion to postpone is debatable, but the motion to postpone would take precedence over any motion to amend. Yeah, so we have to dispose of the motion to postpone first and then if you want to amend further, you can.
So, okay, so I withdraw that motion. We can deal with that motion after this vote. I guess I would bring up, I guess what Supervisor Stevens said, actually at last meeting. If you recall, she was talking about the current board has the right to make this decision and it's within our authority. And she actually made a good argument in her last meeting as to why the current board has responsibility to make decisions right now as opposed to pushing it off to a future board. So in the spirit of that, I would actually agree with what Supervisor Stevens said two weeks ago.
Supervisor Bonkamp.
I agree, this should be delayed. This is probably a change in resolutions. We go from ethical conduct to hiring practices. And this is a totally different topic. For us not to get Josh's input, have counsel be able to review it, give us the opinion on it. It's not, we don't have the proper information to make a decision here. And it has nothing to do with elections coming up or anything else. It was original. I'm voting down. This next one I might, but I have no time to handle it. So I'm in favor of throwing that. With that being said, I call the question.
Clarification. We got a motion. We have amendment. We have another amendment on top of it.
We have the main motion, which was to adopt the resolution that was listed in your packet. And then there was a motion to amend with a substitute amendment proposed by Wilson and seconded by Stevens. And then after that, Stevens made a motion to postpone to a date certain. And Davis seconded it that. And then after that, Supervisor Zorol tried to make an amendment to the resolution again, and that one was out of order. So we are considering right now Stevens' motion to postpone to a date certain for two meetings. Well, so that has been made. There hasn't been a second to that motion yet, so that motion is not quite in order.
On order? Seconded by. Hold on, everybody.
So we are voting, so the call to action goes through. We are voting to postpone for two meetings, to table it for two meetings, table the amendment or table the original?
Both. So it'll, it gets as one package, the most, the motion to postpone climbs up the ladder and applies to both the subsidiary motion, which is the motion to amend, and the main motion. So basically the resolution would be delayed for two meetings and at that point.
They will come back.
Correct.
So we have a motion.
We're going to order.
Hold on, we have a motion by Bonkamp. Call the question and seconded by Tillman.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Zorol.
Thank you. Do we need to dispose of that amendment with Supervisor Wilson's amended version? Does that have to be addressed first prior to postponing it?
No. So you basically, if the motion to postpone was, were to be successful, then you would, like freezes in time. And so the motion, all the motions that have been made that are properly before the body, they're still properly before the body. You just take that piece of legislation at the point at which you postponed it and you bring it back in front of the body at the time at which it is eligible to be re- brought. So you don't need, in fact, you cannot dispose of it. And if the motion to postpone is successful, you cannot dispose of any of the other business on that motion, on that main motion. You have to delay it to a future date.
But are we even going to have notes when it comes back?
There will be nothing changed about the circumstance when it comes back.
All right, that's important. Okay, thank you.
So what we have now is a motion and a second to end debate.
Twenty-one, yes, no, five, three, yes.
Now we go back to Supervisor Stevens' motion to lay this over for two meetings. At this time.
Point of process. Can you be specific with the date?
Yeah.
It's April twenty-fifth. Ron Woodman did this week table something a month ago on small business ARPA money and that's never come back and you had a specific data. I've got a photographic memory, but I have absolutely no recall.
The first meeting in April would be April eleventh. The second meeting in April would be April twenty-fifth. So it would come back. I presume it's on, on the second meeting it would come back. So it evolves. Point of order. What would that be, April sixteenth? Is that meeting still on?
April sixteenth is only the organizational meeting. There's no new business.
Okay.
So April twenty-fifth. I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Yes, twenty-one, no, five, three, yes.
The motion passes.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Zorol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to reconsider item eleven A one, authorizing ARPA funds for children's museum in Rock County preventing the 2024 budget.
You just confirmed with Lisa that you voted in the negative on that motion.
And I just need a second, please.
The, the second does not have to have voted in the negative. They can have voted in the.
Supervisor Cross.
So now the motion before the body is a motion to reconsider on the motion, the main motion on the children's museum resolution. So the deliberation on whether to reconsider that item. Voting in the affirmative would undo the vote that was taken on the main motion. It would be then properly before the body to deliberate on that resolution again. A vote in the negative would mean you are satisfied with the outcome and you do not want to reconsider that item. It is, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it is debatable, so that you can debate the motion to reconsider and then eventually there'll be a vote.
Okay.
Correct. So reconsidering would mean you'd like to redo the vote on the children's museum resolution. If you don't want to reconsider, it means you don't want to redo the vote on the children's museum resolution. Well, that is up to you.
Supervisor Bonkamp.
I have a question, point of order question. Don't you have to be on the winning side?
I, I have a point of word question, and don't you have to be on the winning side to reconsider it?
You have to be on the prevailing side. So this was a budget amendment, the no side was actually the prevailing side. So even though there were less no votes than there were yes votes, the no's, the no votes prevailed because they prevented the body from gaining the twenty members necessary to pass the motion. So then, so that Supervisor Zorol voted no, so he can make the motion because he was on the prevailing side of the vote.
Is everyone clear?
No.
So I'm going to try to. We need further. So is everyone clear, or do we need a court counsel to run through it one more time? What does voting, let's do it simply like this, what does voting yes mean?
Voting yes means you would like to take up the resolution to devote ARPA dollars to the children's museum again and try to pass it again.
Okay.
Everyone clear?
Yes.
This time, please vote.
Yes, seventeen, no eight, three, absent.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so now what happens is, we now go to a point in time at which item eleven A one is, is back before you, it is debatable. So if people want to re-articulate positions or give additional information, that the board may help the board decide, they are more than welcome to do that, and then we will take a new vote on A one. And that vote will still need to garner twenty yes votes in order to be successful. We do not need a first and a second.
Supervisor, Supervisor Zorol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we took a vote on this earlier today, we needed twenty votes, it failed. At seventeen votes, you need three extra votes. I'd like to offer a compromise to get an extra three votes so that we can pass this. So with that said, I move to amend the motion by changing the amount of ARPA funds to be three hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents. And the other one hundred and sixteen, eight hundred and four, seventeen, and seventy-six cents is going to be coming from the administrative office to eliminate the equity strategist position. One hundred and sixteen, eight oh four, seventy-six cents includes the wages, the benefits, and we can compromise and get an extra three votes, do it for the children. I need a second on that, please.
There is a motion, the second by Penny Cook. Any discussion? Supervisors, come in.
I brought the resolution forward at the children's museum. I don't want to run down this rabbit hole, I don't think it's the time or place for it. I have a certain opinion on DEI, which I won't state now, but I just don't want to put the children's museum into this discussion, I don't think it's the right time or place.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Cleveland, close.
Yeah.
Okay, so there is, Supervisor Bryant.
So did the, the original vote have enough people vote for it?
No. Supervisors, Zorol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to emphasize here that this is the board coming together, building bridges, working to compromise. The majority of the resolution is substantially similar. What it comes down to is are you just somebody who's willing to compromise and do it for the children or not? So I recommend a yes vote so that we can pass it this time.
Supervisor Stevens.
Okay, Mr. Chair. What's happening here is that we are beginning to ask to throw our D E and I initiative and people in this community under the bus so we can get something that we need in this community for our children. And I think that is difficult, and I think that behavior is unethical. And now I just, I don't even know what other word to use. That's what's actually happening from here, we're not building bridges. And anybody who agrees to do that is not someone who's participating in building bridges, that's not what's happening here. So I'm going to call a question.
Question's been called, but this time, we got a second away. Supervisor, move it. Since this time, what's on the table is calling the question and ending debate. Please vote.
Correct, so this would end. Voting on the question would close debate on the amendment. So, so that's kind of it. It would not end debate on the main motion.
Yes, twenty one, four, no, three, absent.
Now we have to vote on the Zorol amendment.
This time, please vote.
Yes, two, no twenty-three, three, absent.
Now, vote on the main motion.
Please vote, Supervisor Zorol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to table this for two meetings.
Second, supervisor, uh, second by supervisor, this is AJ. Any discussion on that? See now that Supervisor Stevens.
What exactly do we tell them, this whole getting rid of D E and I people?
No, so the amendment failed, amendment's no longer before the board. It's Supervisor Collins' resolution to devote ARPA dollars to the children's museum would be postponed for consideration for two meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Can I clarify, is that April twenty fifth?
It's not, I'm asking, so we're talking about April twenty fifth, yeah. Are we all clear? Clarify, there.
So, so otherwise, we vote, if we vote not for it, we can vote for the museum again, but we postpone it for, I mean, will it be gone completely, or will it come back on the twenty-fifth?
It will come, it will come back on the twenty-fifth, so we don't session our board sessions, all the resolutions that are currently pending continue through the election onto the new board. So it will, it will come back on the twenty-fifth for a vote at that time, if you vote in affirmative. If you voted in the negative, then it will be voted on tonight.
Supervisor, Supervisor Rockham.
And we're just voting on call the question, right?
No, we're voting on the, we're voting, we're voting on postponing this vote until April twenty-fifth. Everyone clear? Please vote.
Supervisor, morning. Yes, nineteen, no six, three, absent.
Their motion. Two, two, Rockham. Tillman, I'll hold the paper, say yes.
Hi.